Good evening, Chair. Calls to order legislative session date 25-016. I would ask you to all please stand for the pledge followed by the opening prayer by Councilwoman Robert.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, as we gather here tonight, bless us on making the right decisions for the county, for our citizens, grant us the knowledge in order to move things forward and look at what we are doing for our county. Amen.
Amen.
Counsel, if I may, I'd like to take a second just to recognize former County Executive Harkins in the audience this evening. It's good to see you out, Jimmy. Also, counsel, may I have general consent to move to item 5A and then return to four after? Show of hands. Thank you. Agenda item number four, Presentation of Proclamations, Harford Living Treasure, John O'Neill, Mr. Riley.
As if we're all standing on the day.
Yep.
Hang on. Counsel President, I move to approve the appointment of John O'Neill Jr. as the Harford Living Treasure.
Second.
They're moving a second to approve, Mr. O'Neill. Is there any discussion? There being none? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mrs. Robert.
Aye.
Mrs. Emhoff.
Aye.
Mr. Jandredano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Willsaddle.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative and a negative, the appointment is hereby approved.
And now?
Step down, please. Counsel, Mr. O'Neill. And anyone else you'd like to have with you?
Whereas John O'Neill Jr. received the Harford County Cultural Arts Board recommendation to the Harford County Council for recognition as a Harford Living Treasure and whereas Mr. O'Neill began his career as a seventh grade math teacher in 1968 before joining the Maryland State Police, in 1991 he became Director of Procurement for Harford County. Four years later, he served as the Warden of the Harford County Detention Center where he was instrumental in its expansion and the promotion of mental health programs for detainees and whereas in 1998, John became the Harford County Director of Administration and briefly served as Acting County Executive. He played a key role in coordinating governmental efforts to construct the Jarrettsville Public Library and the Bircham Medical Building. In 2005, he became the Deputy Executive Director of Maryland Environmental Services and served as Acting Executive Director a decade later. John was adjunct professor of Stevenson University for 49 years. As President of the Baltimore Streetcar Museum, he procured grants to support the museum's upgrades and operation and whereas from 1991 to the early 2000s, John assisted with the annual Jarrettsville Fire Company Train Guarding, helping to design the tracks and set up the train layouts. He also collaborated with numerous charitable organizations to support Harford County residents. Now, therefore, we, the County Council of Harford County, Maryland, on this 13th day of May 2025, do hereby proclaim John J. O'Neill Jr. a Harford Living Treasure and be it further known that his lifetime experience and contributions to the Harford County community will provide a permanent record which will recall the past, inform the present, and guide the future of Harford County and that his memories and history will be recorded by the Harford County Oral Historian and will become part of the Oral Historian Collection of the Library.
So, John, on behalf of the council, we do have a proclamation here for you. I just want to let you know you're not only a living treasure for Harford County, but also your service to the state, you're a living treasure for the state. I'm going to have County Executive, if you'll find your way up here, I know he's going to take a little while to get here, and so while he comes, I'd like to present this to you and he has a few words he'd like to say also, okay?
My pleasure.
So, my first endorsement for political office 150 years ago, Mr. Harkins here was the one that endorsed me and so, Jim, I know you got, yeah, it's your fault.
I was going to say, so you're the one we need to blame.
I know you've got some words to say about your friend there.
Well, I just want to say that the John O'Neill you see before you is a consummate professional. Everything that he does, he does it to the nth degree, excuse me. Pill time. Donald Trump's calling, no, I'm just kidding. He always completed everything that he undertook as a master, but the thing little known about him is he had a soft spot. Yes, believe it or not, he had a soft spot for those who worked with the county. You always knew him as Mr. No, but he had a soft spot for people with disabilities. And quite frankly, he brought me over to it as well, so, all good. It's good to be here, congratulations, my friend.
Thank you.
JR, I don't know if you wanted to say something. I know he's a friend of yours also. If you'd like to come up and say a few words, we would appreciate it.
John, what can you do? He's not quite a politician, but, no, thank you. Yes, John and Jim and Rob, we all worked together for quite a number of years. Jim's right, he was Mr. No. Boy, we'd have it out and then we'd have to go up to Jim to get the thing straightened out, but he usually sided with John, was always a problem. Yeah, what Jim said is exactly correct. He is the best guy, one of the best guys you've ever worked with, worked for, and I'm glad you're in this position because you've done so much for the county, so much for the state, and just all the best. Thank you.
Congratulations, young man. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Nice to meet you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Congratulations.
Mr. Bennett?
Whereas National Skilled Nursing Care Week was established by the American Healthcare Association in 1967 and encourages skilled nursing care centers around the county, country, to host a variety of events that shine a light on the individuals who reside, work, and volunteer in nursing centers and whereas this year's theme, Tapestry of Life, highlights the meaningful stories that make up each person's journey in skilled nursing care. From the residents and families to caregivers and staff, everyone adds a unique thread that is woven into the vibrant tapestry. The theme celebrates the connections, resilience, and strength that unite us all and whereas Citizens Care is a comprehensive healthcare facility in Haverty Grace, offering patients and residents the comforts of home for the last 58 years, the facility is staffed with caring, experienced professionals, and provides round-the-clock skilled nursing care as well as fully-equipped therapy department offering physical, speech, and occupational therapy. The Maryland Department of Health's most recent annual quality assessment ranks Citizens Care number seven in the state, the highest rating of any facility in Harford County, demonstrating the genuine care and understanding they provide for each resident. Now, therefore, we, the County Council of Harford County, Maryland, on this 13th day of May 2025, do hereby proclaim National Skilled Nursing Care Week, May 11 through May 17, 2025, and express our appreciation to Citizens Care for the commitment to the community.
Mr. Bennett, call whoever you like.
You'd like to come on up? Come on up, there's plenty of room.
Is there no one at the nursing homes this evening?
It's movie night.
Put a resident in charge.
That's good.
Mr. Walter, I'll bring that over to you, but I just want to thank all of you at Citizens for all you do every single day for the residents at Citizens Care. You know, I live in Haverty Grace on Bourbon Street, but one of the things that I know, I said to the mayor recently, is no matter what street you live on in Haverty Grace, there will be a time in your life where more likely than not, you come to Citizens. And whether it's the people waving through the windows when I go to Bomb Boys, or it's the way that everybody in that building is known by name, or I think about the residents for some of you who were there when you had your first day of work and continue to be there for years on, what you provide for the community in helping people retain their humanity and making them feel loved and making them feel like they're a part of a community and not just feel it, but make it real for them, is just such an incredible gift and it's such a blessing to know that we have citizens. And it's also, I think, a great reminder to us that 1972, that there was a council up there that felt bold enough to say, "Let's fund building a nursing facility here in Harford County, built by our county government," and to be in a county that dreams big enough to say, "Everybody matters to us," is just such a tremendous blessing and I'm glad to always advocate to get any capital project I can done for the building, not letting citizens stay a secret, but again, just thank you all so much for what you do every day.
That's good. And all of these schools, we have to like the homecoming. They're going to have to get tight. Or some squatting.
Second row.
You want to make another row?
Make another row.
Just shorter.
You're going there, that already, Jacob? Thought you had 30 years to go.
I thought he was going in.
Executive appointments, Harford County Public Library Board of Trustees, student appointment, Isabella Lugo Frescuri. Hey, hey, may I have a motion, please?
Counsel President, I move to approve the appointment of Isabel Lugo Frescuri.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. We're moving a second to approve the Library Board Trustee appointment. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes?
I just want to say, I can't think of a better student to have on the library board. Just thinking about a decade ago with your little free library that you installed in Haverty Grace to now, how fitting it is to see you continuing to value books, to value the written word and to share that with the community. I just think that's tremendous to see that follow-through in your life from then to now.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else?
I'm choking, Councilman Gia.
Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mrs. Robert.
Aye.
Mrs. Emhoff.
Aye.
Mr. Jandredano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Willsaddle.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Would you please stand and be recognized? Thank you. Commission on Disabilities, Nick Davis, Gillian Miller, Antoinette Stevens, may I have a motion, please?
Counsel President, I move to approve the appointments of Nick Davis, Gillian Miller, and Antoinette Stevens.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. We're moving a second to approve the Library Board Trustee appointment. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes?
I just want to say, I can't think of a better student to have on the library board. Just thinking about a decade ago with your little free library that you installed in Haverty Grace to now, how fitting it is to see you continuing to value books, to value the written word and to share that with the community. I just think that's tremendous to see that follow-through in your life from then to now.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else?
I'm choking, Councilman Gia.
Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mrs. Robert.
Aye.
Mrs. Emhoff.
Aye.
Mr. Jandredano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Willsaddle.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Would you please stand and be recognized? Thank you. Commission on Disabilities, Nick Davis, Gillian Miller, Antoinette Stevens, may I have a motion, please?
Counsel President, I move to approve the appointments of Nick Davis, Gillian Miller, and Antoinette Stevens.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been approved, moved and seconded to approve the appointments. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mrs. Robert.
Aye.
Mrs. Emhoff.
Aye.
Mr. Jandredano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Willsaddle.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, the appointments are hereby approved. Are any of those folks here with us this evening?
Yes. Killed the Gillianists.
Stand, Gillian. I haven't seen you in so long, I didn't recognize you.
I was actually doing well.
Good, 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 good. Deputy Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Boucher, may I have a motion, please?
Counsel President, I move to approve the appointment of Timothy Boucher.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved a second to approve the Deputy Director. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. Bennett had his hand raised.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bennett.
I just wanted to, I wanted to thank Tim for coming and speaking with me tonight and for having that opportunity. I think that's really important. I think planning and zoning is in a period of lot of transition right now and making sure that we have the exact right people that we feel best, especially entering this time of planning for the future with the master plan. I just think it's really important that it's the exact right fit for the right moment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
No.
Mrs. Robert.
No.
Mrs. Emhoff.
No.
Mr. Jandredano.
No.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Willsaddle.
No.
Mr. Bennett.
No.
There being six votes in a negative, one affirmative, the appointment is hereby denied. Six, Special Presentation, Citizen Care Center. Mr. Walter, would you like to come forward, please?
I am Walter, Administrator of Citizens Care and Rehab Center, I should say, the proud Administrator of Citizens Care and Rehab Center, and on behalf of the center, thank you for recognizing us tonight. In doing so, you are focusing and putting a spotlight on individuals such as those that are behind me who have committed their lives to putting others first, who display patience and compassion each and every day, and I am very happy and proud to be a part of that team. Citizens, to give you a little history, is the oldest nursing facility in the county. We're the only standalone independent facility in the county. We're the only nonprofit facility in the county, and quite simply, we're the best. We got to share earlier the rankings we had with the state of Maryland, and we do not take those lightly. Those come as the Maryland Department of Health's state rankings based upon their criteria, which involve many things, and a lot of that comes back to the staff that we have. I could go on and share many other attributes and accolades, but I think that a video we created not too long ago demonstrates the important aspects of Citizens Care Center and can better share the things better than I can.
Citizens Care is the highest-ranked nursing home for care in Harford County, Maryland. Care is at the heart of everything we do at Citizens, and we believe in doing it better than anyone. Why? Because you and your family deserve nothing less. Citizens has been taking care of our senior population for over 50 years. Our memory care and skilled rehab is known to be the highest quality in the area. Most of our staff have been of service for over 20 years, while some have even 40 years under their belt.
I have been working here for 45 years. It is a passion that I started when I was 16 or 17 as a volunteer and have worked my way through. I worked in nursing, and now I'm the Director of Volunteer Services. And like I said, it has been my passion to serve the geriatric population here, to enhance their quality of life.
I've made the best friends here. They are, one resident started calling me her little sister when she introduced me. That just made my heart explode when she did that, and I realized then, I wasn't here for a job, I was here to take care of my family, and these people have become my family for 31 years. Some of the staff have been here even longer than I have, and so we've really built some wonderful relationships and great bonds. We've done crafts together with the residents, do puzzles, and so there's just so much life going on in here. So when people say, "How can you work in a place like that?" My response is, "Come to Citizens, come up on Tidewater and enjoy a dance party with us because it's the best dance party I've ever been to." So come on out to Citizens and see what we're all about.
What I like best about the company, they really do care about what our residents' needs and wants and desires are. That is the one thing that no matter what you always hear, and they always push, and they do their best to make sure that takes place, and even when you're walking around in the community, the people really speak highly of what goes on here, and it makes me proud to be here.
My name is Jin. I'm a medicine aide. I work here for 15 years. My job is to take care of residents in need. I love here very much.
Check out our website at citizenscarecenter.com and a brochure that has all of the information you need. Care begins with compassion.
Those four employees total 140 years spent at Citizens Care Center. On the average, that's 26 years, and they're a prime example of why Citizens strives to do its very best. I like to say my claim to fame is that I worked there in high school and college, but I don't want you thinking about how many years ago that was, although I know there are people in the council who are younger, but I'm sure, because I read the bios, there are some who are a little bit older. But what I, the reason I point that out is because I've worked in this industry for many, many years, but I have never seen a team as committed as the ones who are behind me and the ones who are at the facility now and those who couldn't be with us tonight. So on behalf of them, we thank you very much for honoring us tonight. In the next few weeks, members of the council will receive an invitation to attend our grand reopening of our Riverwalk Rehabilitation Unit. That is a joint venture we have done with Harford County Government, and we'd like to give a special shout-out to the Capital Projects Division of Harford County Government for their support, their leadership, as well, we'd also like to point out, our Board of Directors who helped us, Jacob, Heather, wherever she is, and we also have Carol Leinhardt here, and we appreciate everyone's involvement very much. And I'd like to give just a couple special recognition. Nursing homes are called nursing for a reason, and that is the heart of what we do in care. And we do have our Director of Nursing here tonight, Cassie, if you would raise your hand in the back there, who does a tremendous job, and an Administrator and Director of Nursing work very closely together in leading a building, so I'm very thankful to have her as well as all of our staff who are here tonight and those, as I said, could not be here. So please look for those invitations and we hope that you can join us in just a few weeks.
Well, thank you for your presentation, and we do recognize the importance of your facility in our county and in the city of Haverty Grace, so, he mentioned 1972, I said, "Yeah, yeah, that's great, that's the year I graduated high school."
I'm not going to tell my year.
I know, I know, I know. Counsel, at this time, Mr. Jandredano.
So, I've never gotten the opportunity to be there, but I look forward to the invitation. I'd love to come. I can definitely see that it's been upgraded, I don't know how many times, but I was pretty impressed just by looking at a lot of the features they had there, and I saw it's been modernized, and you were talking about the capital project. How many times have you upgraded the facility and do you continually pick different areas to upgrade? And what's the next upgrade that you anticipate where it's on the books for?
So I'm aware of five different projects that have happened through the course since 1967, but there have probably been more to that. Last year, through the Capital Projects Division, we were able to put a new roof on a large part of our building that had not had one in over 30 years. So again, we appreciate the cooperation from Harford County Government. Once we finish this project, provided I still have hair and I get up every morning, we're looking at going to our Harborview Unit, which is a unit that hasn't really witnessed a lot of renovation project, and that's a long-term care unit there. So we're very excited about the 22 beds that we're renovating right now, and that will put our rehab unit right next to our gym, which is where it really should be.
Thank you.
Jake?
First, I want to make sure to shout out Shabida from the Law Department who serves on the board because, I mean, she is constantly pushing, pushing, pushing for anything that we can get for citizens, and I think without her assistance, who knows what we would have gotten done in the past few years. So, you know, she's been a tremendous asset, and I know is always saying, "Let me see what I can get, let me see who I can talk to." But I just wanted to compliment you because I know in your few years you've been back at Citizens, the work you've done to make the lighting more welcoming, to make rooms brighter, to make the hallways feel clean and nice to be in, it does so much as someone who's walking through the building, but as, you know, I'm sure for families who are saying, "Is this where my loved one is going to be safe?" And it just, it really is such a great expression of care, the way Citizens has become part of First Fridays in town, the way we've brought the community into Citizens, getting the city to come tour, inviting the county to come tour. It's easy to forget that that's a county-built building, that Harford County Government made that building, and for too long, we let people forget, but you've done such a good job of helping people remember where Citizens is rooted and why it's so important. So thank you so much for what you've done in your short time back at Citizens, although it's, I guess, it's been long enough to not call it short anymore. And when you come to visit, I encourage everybody to look at the name of the council members who voted and approved the Capitol Works for building that building because it's a good reminder of what we're capable of doing as a local government.
And to go back to those renovations, each renovation, for the most part, has a plaque of the County Council and executive and those involved with those projects.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Well, thank you for your presentation this evening, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Agenda number seven, Approval of Minutes, Board of Health Updates, Spring 2025, May 6, 2025, Legislative Day 25-015, May 6, 2025, Public Hearing, May 7, 2025. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Eight, Introduction and Consideration of Resolutions, we have none. Nine, Introduction of Bills, we have none. Ten, Introduction and Consideration of Amendments, we have none. Eleven, Call for Final Reading of Bills, we have none. Twelve, Enrollment of Bills, we have none. Thirteen, Unfinished Business, we have none. Fourteen, New Business, we have none. Seventeen, Comments and Input from Attending Citizens. Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President, we have one this evening, Verna White.
She just stepped out. So I don't know if she left?
We have no one else registered, Mr. President.
Okay. Sixteen, Business from Council Members, Mr. Bennett.
Hello. Good evening, good to be with everybody. I want to remind everyone that Thursday's our last budget hearing at 7:00 PM, so if there is something that you want to advocate for us to make sure we get in the budget, things that we can modify, things like capital projects, that's a great opportunity for us to hear. As I said the other night to somebody, there is no push without a pull, so we really need people to tell us what we can do in order for us to do it. I also want to congratulate Johnny Booker, Vicki Jones, and Matthew Ellis, who all were elected to City Council. For Johnny and Vicki, they were re-elected, and for Matthew, it'll be his first term, but thank you for the city. It was a great turnout, well over 1,000 people voted, which...
The Ma'apaw Heritage Trail will span approximately eight miles, connecting Edgely Grove Park in Fallston through Bel Air to Friends Park in Forest Hill. And then May is Mental Health Awareness Month. I'm sure my two councilwomen to my right will speak about that, but the Ed Lowly Foundation is hosting a benefit concert on May 23 at 7:00 PM at the Haverty Grace Opera House. Tickets are available on their website. Thank you.
Ms. Emhoff?
Just to reiterate that May is Mental Health Awareness Month, obviously, and just a reminder that pretty soon the schools will be dismissing for the summertime, so we have a few more weeks of watching out for the buses, but just being aware that the kids are going to be out pretty soon. And also, I just wanted to wish a belated Mother's Day to anybody who celebrated.
Thank you. Ms. Robert?
Yes, hello, good evening. I just wanted to let everyone know that on Wednesday, May 7, I did take the oath of office, so, for the Maryland Affordable Housing Trust Board of Trustees, so I'm now officially on that commission. I did meet, as it's Mental Health Awareness, I did meet with a founder of Clear Thoughts Mental Health Agency and Consulting, and linking him up with a lot of our other community agencies to start doing some mentoring for young teenagers and adults who are lost and need guidance. So he has a great path, and I can't wait to see how he assists us with our youth in the community. Attended the Bayside Family Wellness Event at Concord Park on May 10. And Monday, May 12, I attended the Mako Diversity Caucus. And then today, I attended the Hartford Community Action Agencies, they renamed their food bank, so now it's officially Hartford County Food Bank. I feel like I'm missing something.
That's it.
And so that was great, it was, I had a good crowd in there, and watching them, again, still like a well-oiled machine, doing the food bank and looking at food insecurity. And then from there, I attended the Bike From Work Day, it was actually a week, but today happened to be the rainy day. So that was great. They had 130 people actually register to bike to work for the week. Unfortunately, it seems like it's going to be a rainy one for them, but it's, it's a good cause. A couple of the citizens rode their bikes in, and I myself have purchased one of those tricycles, so we're going to be trying that out soon. And then finally, for anyone who is interested in music at a park, we have music at The Point on Saturday at Mariner Park from 12 to 5. We have a couple good bands coming. It's free, bring your lawn chair, it's going to be food trucks, et cetera. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Ms. Robert. Agenda item 15, business from the president. Again, Thursday night is our last budget public hearing. It'll be May 15, like I said, 7:00 PM in these chambers. As far as events, our county is rich in nonprofits, and they do so much for our youth, our students. This past Friday, the Charlie Riley Foundation held its 19th Annual Golf Tournament at Geneva Farm. They, the benefit from that goes to scholarships to our high school students, seniors, and fire company members as well. I want to thank Chip Riley, Bruce Riley, Brian Donnelly, and John Hughes for all they do, plus the entire team for the Riley Foundation. You heard council members speak to the Bel Air Moose Lodge, there was nine or 10 recipients there for Law Enforcement Week. Last night, we attended the SIAB, the Society of Italian-American Businessmen's Scholarship Dinner, and we awarded, I think, seven or eight students there. The young lady that sat with Councilman Jan Giordano and myself was Abigail Bond, outstanding young lady. Today, this afternoon, I had the pleasure and the honor to attend Hartford Community College Cyber Range for their new cyber-ranging classroom ribbon cutting. It's a partnership with BCR Cyber, the Maryland Association of Community Colleges, the State Department of Commerce, the Secretary of Higher Education was there, Secretary of Commerce was there. They create real-life simulators of cyber scenarios so that our students can learn firsthand, and it is a great way for a young individual to create a very, very good career, and we appreciate the college for their continued investment in workforce development. So, and then also today, we completed our health officer interviews. We identified a couple of candidates to be sent down to Dr. K and the Maryland Department of Health for their role in the process. Hopefully, within the next week or 10 days, we will have something come back to us from Maryland Department of Health, to where we can reconvene the Health Officer Search Committee for the final time, and then bring a candidate forward to the entire council for confirmation. So looking forward to that. And with that, oh, I did attend the Community Action Agencies ribbon cutting today for the new food bank, Hartford County Food Bank. And again, 43 years of service in Hartford County to the Hartford Community Action Agency, 39 years as the county's official food bank. So we appreciate all they do, appreciate your comments there today, councilwoman, and it's just a great team down there, they provide a great service for our citizens in need. So with that, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.